The replacement of Taser equipment expense allocation breakdown for this thirty thousand. It's gonna be, what, thirty thousand four hundred dollars now, right? As we get an extra three hundred dollars off.
Correct.
So we have eighteen thousand dollars that's transferred to the equipment replacement fund.
Correct.
And then there's an eighty-eight hundred dollar with an asterisk. And that's an A-BAG grant?
Yes, it's an A-BAG grant. To, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I mean, and A-BAG, why would A-BAG give us a grant for this?
So A-BAG gives grants for what they call third-party liability items. So that's anything that's basically going to either prevent serious injury or lawsuit. To give you another example, A-BAG, generally speaking, will require you to get a matching fund. So if they give you eight grand, a lot of times they'll say, all right, you pay for it, we'll pay for it. Or whatever you spend, we'll match that. Taser and the cameras that you wear are the only two products that they make that they actually will reimburse at a hundred percent. Maybe it's because they classify those items as third-party liability items.
Okay, well, so they're giving us eighty-eight hundred.
And A-BAG gives it to us because, you think about it from the insurance perspective. If the officer's not carrying a taser, the next line of defense is the bullet. And because this is a less lethal form of weapon, but one that's way up there in terms of, this person is a dangerous suspect that needs to be contained. And so from A-BAG's perspective, they would much rather see us with new functional equipment to contain these people than have the officer have no other recourse but to pull their service weapon. And that can lead to much more serious insurance problems.
So just going on, you're taking twenty-five hundred dollars out of machinery, equipment, and another fourteen hundred dollars out of your safety supplies and materials. So of the thirty thousand, we could essentially deduct eighty-eight hundred. And so our actual cost is less for this.
Yes.
To me, I think that sounds like a bargain for the safety of our officers and the total safety of, you know, any victims who are out there to the extent that our officers can take care of an incident without pulling a loaded weapon, like a gun, is, I think, something that we should all be trying to do. And I know, one of my first questions in council where it'll all be asked, so how often do we use tasers? Well, we answered that. And are officers fully trained on a regular basis on what taser to, you know, what weapon to pull?
Oh, absolutely. As you know, use of force is right up there with the top things, terms of liability. So yeah, we train on it, we get Lexible training that talks about taser. We get regular taser training. Yeah, it's a constant, it's a constant training cycle.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the public want to speak on this? Give a public comment? Bring them back to council. Would you like to entertain a motion to accept this recommendation?
So who?
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Reese, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you so much for all you did. Okay, so here we are. I think we're going to, we go back to item number thirteen, which is our tennis contract. And the recommendation is gonna come from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have the staff report. Basically, we have a tennis contract with Alan Margot for tennis services to service the town's tennis pro. He operates out of Holbert Palmer Park. The contract requires that Alan participate and provide the town with tennis camps and clinics. He does that. We've got some financials that he's provided to the town. Humpy bought a couple of camp events. In addition, the contract says that for every hour that Alan is on the courts, he paid the town twenty-five dollars for that lessons or the lessons that he's providing. We did some recent modifications in the most recent iteration of the contract where we talked about blackout rates for those camps to try and extend the time and possibility of getting some additional attendance at those camps. We also talked about putting exclusive use signs up in the tennis courts to signify that Alan is the town's exclusive tennis pro. Any lessons that are provided on the court are supposed to be provided. Alan, Alan didn't sign the contract because he's got some concerns with respect to the exclusivity clause. He's happy to provide the summer camps, but doesn't feel that the courts are in condition enough to warrant a tennis pro kind of situation for exclusivity. Wants to wait until enhancements are done. Even then, it's something the town council could decide whether or not we need a pro or not. Now, he's here this evening to provide the council some feedback on that issue. We also have Bob Roser from Parks and Rec to provide some feedback as well. The town has not received, to my knowledge, revenue from Alan with respect to private lessons for the twenty-five dollars an hour. That's an issue that needs to be discussed as well. As far as we know, he does give lessons on the court, but statistics show otherwise it's something we can't. Questions before the council as to where we wanna go next? There's several options. I think I've mentioned some over the council on a couple of occasions here and there. Whether or not we want the tennis pro, whether or not we want to subsidize the courts with keys, whether or not we want to just open the courts up, all kinds of options.
So.
You might also ask Alan or Bob to make any comments as well.
Should we, why don't we do that?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Go ahead. He's waited a long time.
Thank you for waiting.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Alan Margot. I run the junior programs, tennis programs at the park. I'm also on the park and Park Foundation. In fact, I helped put in that path in eighty-two, so I won't tell you how old I am. But the issue on not signing that, where I don't agree, is we have a lot of key members that play out there that bring their own pros. The courts need to be filled, and right now, we should be encouraging people to play. There's no way to police it. The courts sit there empty, and if somebody's playing, I'm hoping they're buying keys. I get all my, my mom's and dad's, she gives me to buy keys for my junior programs. We sold forty-four last year, we're up to sixty-three this year. We used to be in the hundreds. And I think we should be trying to figure out a way to encourage people to use those courts. I think we are not a club, we don't have a membership. We have a list of key holders who donate money to the park for the tennis fund. We keep them locked so that we can keep the bicycles and the skateboards off them without wrecking the surface. And I think we need to figure out a way to raise the key sales, that's where the money is. There's no way to police the other people playing out there. So I was there in October, early October, I haven't been out since. But there were two pros also teaching out there. I'm hoping somebody's buying keys, because we would like to have more people use the courts in the community.
So, any other members of the public want to speak on this before we talk about it, council?
Okay.
I like I've taken up a lot of your time tonight.
Yeah.
I think the kids program that Alan runs is really important. It gives, you know, any of the kids, you know, a chance to learn tennis at a young age. And it's a lifetime, trust me, it's a lifetime sport. It's not one that you'll drop out of if you really like it. Alan does a great job with the kids. I'm there a lot, he does a really great job with the kids. And I think that this contract thing just appears to me to be some kind of a misunderstanding about what was being done versus what was proposed in the contract. Because the twenty-five dollars for private lessons hasn't been paid before, even though the contract indicated that is true. So we were agreeing to, in actual practice, to something that wasn't part of the contract. And so now, we say, let's make the contract match the actual. And so, well, wait a minute, that's a change to the contract. So I think that's an issue. But I think to have Alan there teaching both kids and adults is really important. The kids have a great time learning tennis, they have fun doing it. And I have taken lessons from Alan, and he's a great teacher. We have a really good tennis teacher at the Atherton facility. And, you know, we are in competition a bit because Menlo Park, I know there's Atherton people who get keys at Menlo Park, because I think we charge two fifty for a key for non-resident or two hundred? Two hundred. And in Menlo Park, it's fifty dollars for a resident and a hundred dollars for a non-resident. So non-residents go over there and pay a hundred dollars on much better courts, in much better shape, significantly better shape, with lights, if they wanna play after work in the wintertime. So we do have a competition there. And I think that Alan is one of the draws for our Atherton courts. And I'd like to see us work out an agreement that will keep him teaching the kids and keep him as our tennis guy over at the Holbert Palmer.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so, do you have a comment on that?
I have just a general comment. How many keys, I missed sixty-three. How many sixty-three keys?
Well.
In one three, yes.
Is that what we sold?
Approximately, yes.
So that's sixty-three times two hundred, that's about twelve thousand six hundred, right?
It's how much for a resident?
One fifty for a resident.
For residents or for non-residents?
Okay, so the total was about ten thousand dollars, bring it in. Sorry, I'm a general region. You know, for sixteen hundred dollars, which is all we get from Mr. Margot, you know, it's almost not worth all this effort. It's a very small amount of money, and I don't really, I don't really know. I mean, we're spending an awful lot of time on this for sixteen hundred bucks.
We offer a volunteer program, basically. Kids ride over on their bikes. We get six to ten kids. We've got four venues, three academies and a circus club with less than a month, with salary pros, bathrooms, amenities. Mom can drop the kids off, we're a park out there, so we do the best we can.
I mean, I agree with you that I would love to see the tennis courts used more. But, and all the time I've been here in Atherton, I really haven't seen that much interest in.
So first off, I guess to get the usage up, you know, I don't know if it would be worthwhile to just say, you know, Atherton residents are contributing to the tennis courts. I mean, we just resurfaced them over the last two years. And we probably will be putting more money as we move forward. I know we have to rekey the doors and things like that. I think each Atherton resident, you know, address should get a key if they so choose. I'm not sure we need to charge. I think if we're gonna have Menlo Park people use it, then, you know, the same as they have some sort of differential, we should have some sort of fee associated with that. So I think that would get the usage up. I think it's worthwhile to have a, some sort of kid program there. So I'm not against the kid programs. And I've seen Alan out there teaching the kids out there. He's got two different, right now, I guess, I guess we're finishing up or you just finished up. You had a super juniors and a juniors program. And, you know, it's three times a year, and I think that that's good. You know, I think, you know, I don't know whether or not, how much training there is out there. You know, I went to your website, Alan, it says you train five hundred people a year. I don't know, that was just, you know, past information, hadn't been updated or whatever the situation was. But, you know, we buy the balls, we buy a ball machine, we have the storage facility, we hang the banner, we do a lot of things. And I think all that is, you know, worth, you know, just break even essentially, close to sixteen hundred. You know, I just wonder whether or not, you know, somebody else would be more aggressive with regards to their revenue share, or if there is that much revenue. You know, I'm not really sure. I'm not sure that, I think it's nice that we have somebody out there who's the de facto guy. And I agree with Alan. I've seen other pros out there, and I've spoken to, well, there's one gentleman that's out there on Sundays, a young man. And I've spoken to the city manager, and we put the sign up, and I think we should put a sign on every door. If we're gonna have some sort of exclusive arrangement, then I think that we need to have, you know, make sure that we're monitoring it, or we put something up so that, you know, people are well informed before they decide to not follow the rules. So, you know, Alan had a comment on that. But, you know, it might be worthwhile to see if anybody else would be willing to, you know, to do a different revenue share, but I think to get the usage out of them. I'd rather see us, you know, have the keys given out to Atherton residents and let people use it. And then, you know, over time, if we need to have a major renovation, then we could, you know, ask people to maybe make more donations and things like that. So I guess I have kind of a two-fold, you know, comment. One is, is I think we should expand the use of the fees by making it cheaper or making it free for Atherton. But secondly, you know, I'm not really sure, I guess, on type of training that you're doing out there. You know, reading at your website, but I don't know how many kids show up. I've seen, you know, five or six kids when you're doing it. So I don't know how big the demand is now and how big the demand was before.
My company does tennis getaways and tours with resorts all over. So that's that five hundred number. We do adult tours. This is for kids. The competition's big, camps are big right now. There's camps for everything. To get kids to bike over, I think it's great to have some type of program. You know, I advertise along with everybody else in the papers, we're online. We advertise online with activity hero with everyone. I'm doing everything everyone else does. We don't have any amenities here yet. We could get some bathrooms hopefully, which would help. I think we could revisit the picture then in a year when we could hire maybe someone with more amenities. Right now, we've got six courts out there, and mom doesn't wanna let her kid be alone. She can't drop him off as the other places. So it's, we're a little different than the other places.
You know, the better players get serious about the courts, okay? Okay, I was playing on a court, and the net in the center is two inches low. A serious tennis player doesn't wanna play on the court if the court isn't the specification. And it can't be moved because the system that tightens it is ruined. It just wears out, it's brass, kind of a brass combination. So, you know, they wanna play on courts where the court's smooth and the nets are at the right height. And they're, and they've done a great job of replacing the nets when we needed it. Nets are not in bad shape. But there's just things that tennis players want that are serious about.
I'm not arguing with you on that, Bob. I'm really not. And I think that, and we've tried to put some money into the tennis courts, and we may do that again more in the future. But I guess the question is, to get the usage up, maybe we should just say, they're open, it's an Atherton resident, it's an Atherton asset, the park is an Atherton asset, and Atherton people should be able to get on it when they want. But I think it should be, you know, should be locked in some manner so that it doesn't get abused. And, but, and if you wanna get on a certain court, because I notice certain people like to play on certain courts, or when Alan's using it for his training, he uses certain ones. It would be worthwhile that maybe there's a booking fee if you wanna reserve something. We could do something like that. But I'd like to see the courts free for people in Atherton. And I don't know whether or not it's, you know, maybe sixteen hundred dollars, or if it's even, you triple that. I mean, it's not gonna be a major thing, but I don't know if there's somebody else that would, you know, or another program that we could do it, tie it in with the schools or something. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary?
Well, it's probably not gonna be a surprise, but tennis courts are losing proposition. And they're probably even more so losing proposition in this town. And as part of the leadership roles, we've gotta accept that. We're not going to be making cash cow on these tennis courts. I think that this is something that we ought to bring up again after the parks had some renovations to it, a little leak and so on and so forth. With the bathrooms, it might be more advantageous to have lessons and such out there. I do think making keys available to residents at the police station available to come by, pick up, boom, whatever it is. Residents should know that. But I do also believe that they have to be secure. It's a safety issue, court issue, keeping the conditions that they are issue. I mean, some would argue that they're not in great condition, but they can get worse.
They're better than they were.
Right, right.
A lot better, a lot better.
Right, so, you know, I think that, you know, we should just re-bring this up at a later date and, you know, understand, I mean, we couldn't bleach it anyways. And frankly, unless we put a GPS tracking device on it and willingly do that. But that's not gonna happen, because then we'd have to get everybody else. And I probably would assume that while you're out there, there are others, you're right, that are pros teaching other people, and we do not and never will have the manpower of police tennis courts. So that's my two bits.
So I just have a couple of questions. It's sixteen hundred dollars a year typically for a camp. Is that for both the fall camp and the spring camp?
That is the, sixteen hundred is, yes, is the fee for, at twenty-five dollars an hour. For what, we do a Tuesday, Thursday class in the fall, and we do a Tuesday, Thursday class in the spring. And we run a couple of weeks in the summer camp, nine to twelve and four to five. So that's the hourly, twenty-five dollars.
Okay, and the summer, the camps go for a week, right?
Correct.
So I know that, I mean, I drive by Menlo College tennis courts every day, because I live on Alain Drive. And I, there's Kim Grant, you know, and then there's another one. I mean, they have multiple camps going at the same time. So, I mean, would you object if, I mean, if you don't wanna be the Atherton tennis pro, I mean, you've been the de facto Atherton tennis pro for, what, twenty-five, thirty years?
I can't remember.
I think a long time, yeah. But, you know, and we haven't, you know, really worked within your contract exactly. But would you mind if we had another tennis pro come in and just you did, you know, that you're not doing the camp, they do a camp?
The, we could do that. The thing that we don't wanna lose here in mind is those courts are for the Atherton people and the families that bike over and play there and use the park. I think if we made another program, it doesn't really matter in the big picture if you're taking courts away from people who are using it. We need to get those courts filled like we've had them. Be nice eventually. I'd love to have a problem where I get calls, not all the time, because I'm Steve's buffer. Clean the courts, this happened, that happened, and I go, Steve, and Steve, we will figure out how to fix it. I'd rather have people calling saying, hey, I can't get on, where's the tennis committee? We need a tennis committee to organize this thing. We need a ladder, we need to run some programs like these other academies do with it. They've got three hundred kids coming. Mom drops the kid off, kid goes to the locker, changes, is there, picks him up at five, it works. We don't have that yet. We will maybe.
Well, I think, you know, I would just expect a hundred and something thousand dollars, and so we're talking really sixteen hundred dollars. Adding another sixteen hundred is a drop in the bucket. So I think really, you know, what Alan has said, what Bob has said, you know, Carrie mentioned, I mentioned. You know, I think if we would open the courts up to the Atherton residents, would get the usage up, then we might get more enthusiasm for people to take classes. Then next year, we'll go back and revisit it. And in the meantime, I'd like to see the signs go up. I mean, if we're gonna have a guy that says, you're the Atherton guy, then we have a sign at every door that says, you're the guy.
I have a full-time business. One, number two, if I were to be a teaching pro, I'd probably, like anybody else, be looking for a salary. In the nineties, we hired three pros. And we, and I recommended, from Park Foundation to Park and Rec, which went to the council, they lasted, every one of them lasted less than a year. There's no office, there's no bathrooms. He sits on sidewalk.
Maybe we don't have a pro.
I'm part-time neither. The courts were made for no pro in the beginning.
Okay, I agree. So.
But I worry about the opening it up for residents, but, you know, not giving every resident a key. I like the idea of having, you know, you could.
One address, one per address, and if you lose it, you pick it up.
We still need the income maintenance, that hundred fifty bucks.
That's twenty-four hundred keys.
Yeah, you don't want.
Not everybody's gonna take one.
I would not do that. No, you borrow a key.
Okay, borrow it, fine.
You borrow a key.
Yeah.
We need to have control for a lot of reasons.
Yeah.
And there is a cost involved. And soon as we find some kid has given it to some kid in another community and they've made a copy, then, you know, you get to a point where you might have to rekey the locks and re-issue all the keys. And if you've got a central collection point and a listed number of other keys, if you had to, it's a more manageable program.
If they have a full-time maintenance person at the park.
Well, I'd suggest just opening the courts. And let's look in six months or a year and see if we became inundated with people from everywhere. If it's not a problem. Once again, if the courts are being played on in Menlo, from, with a few Menlo Park residents and Atherton residents, does it really matter?
I'm worried about the surface, those skateboards. I kick kids out all the time. I come over there four o'clock, we got bicycles, skateboards, and they can't get out. Now, we've got the last few months, we have a door they can get out. They get stuck there.
Yeah.
For baseball, mom puts the kid on the court floor while she watches the others, the kids run around the courts.
Menlo College, Menlo College's courts are open. I go in there and I throw the ball for my little dog.
Yeah, I've seen the, I've seen the dog.
We have a lot of dogs in the court in Atherton.
But he's a little one.
Maybe I could.
That's what your full-time pro does, is sits there and, you wanna run for some balls.
Maybe the dog can retrieve the ball.
Yeah, that's what he does.
I think for now, we don't.
We don't need a pro.
We don't need a pro.
So, so if I could maybe recap some of those discussions, rekey the courts if necessary. When would we normally do that, Steve?
February.
February. When we do that, is it keys for all or free of charge, or keys, come and get them, fifty dollars per resident?
Just a key that you can pick up here. We don't need to give keys to everybody, but if they got a key, they come to.
Or they want a key, then they come to.
They purchase a key if they want a key.
Well, I think, look.
You wanna make it less, fifty dollars?
It should be a nominal thing.
What's the cost to do a key?
It's not two hundred.
Is there a special key? Well, we have to change the locks, costs about six hundred dollars, and the price of the keys themselves. It's usually, yeah, about an eight hundred dollar fee.
Sorry, Menlo Park guys are paid for all that. How many Menlo Park keys are out there? I've asked this question before and I won't answer.
A lot.
A lot?
A lot.
Because there are all those people from Felton Gables, so Menlo Park will be paying for the maintenance. I mean, really, Atherton is paying for those, for those courts. It should be free for them if we want to grow the usage. It's the same as the play school. You wanna get kids going to the camp, get the families playing.
So have out-of-residents key charged.
Atherton residents are free, out-of-town residents are under.
Replace our fees.
Whatever it is now.
Whatever our costs are. Total out keys, average of forty-four.
Okay, exclusivity, we write out of the contract, so there's no more twenty-five dollars per hour. Alan, of course, would have to buy a key if anyone wanted him to use the courts. You can't reuse any of the town supplies and materials, because those are only for camps.
Right.
No banners other than the ones that are up there for camps, no other banners.
And does the camps then treat them like another vendor?
And bring it up in twelve months.
It's sixteen hundred.
Right now.
Well, we're saying.
What's the difference between purchasing a key for next year, which would be February first, and being a resident?
If you're a resident, you're free.
Yeah, you don't have to pay for it, Bob.
So where do you get the key?
You're gonna go to the town center and pick it up.
And sign out.
And then, so there's a bunch of keys there, whoever's playing will have a key, and then they take it back?
Well, I think you could sign out.
You get to keep yours.
You're gonna keep yours for next year.
Yeah, you keep it.
Residents keep the key.
Residents.
Unless you lose it, then you have to pay fifty dollars to get it.
It's only real value this next year.
You manage your key, anybody wants one for no charge.
Unless you don't live in Atherton.
Right, if you live in Atherton, there'll be no charge.
Right.
Then we'll have to make a decision on camps in twelve months.
So basically, from my understanding, because I'm gonna get asked out there by all these people that play there in the afternoon with the kids, if you are a resident, you will have, you'll have a free key. One for the family. One for the family.
Right.
And if you're a non-resident, you'll pay a nominal fee, whatever it is.
Yes.
Okay, so basically, what we're doing is we're gonna open them up to the afternoon and see if we can get some interest out there to play.
Right, we're making that decision tonight. Yes.
We're going for it. We're gonna plant flowers and give out keys.
Right? Five or six thousand dollars.
Plant seeds.
Yeah, okay.
We're good.
That's it.
That works.
Okay, so we are actually done.
Now, how many Menlo Park residents think are gonna buy a key?
You received email by council report. I also wanted to give you, this came from the San Mateo County Library gets their annual report from the. So just pass that out, okay? Any other comments? I'd like to hear your. I'd like to hear your council report verbally.
Tomorrow is the trash board meeting. I missed the last one.
We're going backwards.
Well, I didn't make it to the last trash board meeting.
And so, that was it. I hadn't had any other than the bicycle. Yes, thank you.
Yes, we're a dollar. Okay, all right. So, public comments, any public comments? Seen none? I'm going to adjourn.
Okay.